To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we're sitting in the county, the county's efforts to ensure non-discrimination, you could access to all citizens, the county does this debate regarding participants in county activities. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey at this meeting. You are not required to complete this survey. However, the form is anonymous and will be used solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Title VI and ADA. First, I'd like to welcome Doug Baker, our new member of the County Council.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. It's an honor to be here, working with everyone.
Thank you very much.
And I will do the job to the best of my ability to involve everybody.
Appreciate that. First order of business on our agenda is redevelopment board.
I move to appoint Doug Baker to the redevelopment board, Councilman Baker.
Second, I move that we appoint Brett Fairman, citizen member.
We have a motion on the floor for Doug Baker's law to consider that motion.
I move that we amend this motion.
We have a vote on the first motion first, Glenn.
No, awesome.
It's open for discussion.
And my motion is that we also appoint Brett Fairman and let the council, it's a council decision, not one or two persons' decision.
Well, there'll be a vote on the, on the motion.
What's a motion?
The motion is to put Doug Baker on the redevelopment board. And we have a second?
So we're gonna...
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Object to the consideration.
Do you know?
I believe that we have two people that are nominated for this board. And why should the council just appoint a council member and not consider the second having?
There has been some discussion that there was the benefit to having an elected official from the bodies on redevelopment. It's been some citizen information regarding the desire to have that. We have an elected official who's willing to serve. We have a member on council who needs to serve on a board. A motion's been made for Doug Baker and seconded by Tim for Doug Baker to be a representative on the redevelopment commission. I'd ask for a vote. All those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose?
No.
Let's do a roll call vote. Dan?
No.
What?
No.
Dennis?
No.
Yay.
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 I vote aye as well. Motion passes.
So we aren't even, for all our boards, we're not considering any citizens. Is that correct?
That's not correct, but we have...
What happened to the two boards Mr. Carter was on?
He's on, he's on EMA.
Doug's on?
Mark's, Mark's on EMA. We did that at our county board meeting.
You've dominated the guy at the last opening on redevelopment. We approved him.
Right. And I think we should hear, I think we should hear from the candidates.
Well, they're not candidates.
To know what their qualifications are, or does somebody else make her decision?
Their appointment's by this board. This board has appointed Doug Baker to redevelopment board, Dierman County Council.
Yep, it's gonna be four to three, four to three, four to three. I mean, you wanna make all the decisions list, or you gonna get in from the board?
I'm not making all the decisions. I'm one of several.
You definitely did.
That's not true, Glenn. Mr. Dole made the motion. I second it.
We have three to three and the president pro.
That's how it works.
I know it is.
I know. I believe that will not be the case in every vote that we take in going out.
Well, it's been that way so far.
I disagree as well. Next on our agenda is commissioners for EMA.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to request a stipend for the EMS, EMA director, Jason Sullivan, to be given the title of EMS director as well. If you remember, last year you guys passed the LIT tax, and on the recommendation of Mr. Hanifin and his report on page 10, I believe all of you were given copies of that report. I think I emailed it to most of you. And on page 10, he recommended, starting in 2025, an effort to move county-wide, county-operated EMS delivery system should be sought. The hiring or contracting of an EMS director to facilitate the smooth transition will be key to success. The report outlines the planning and logistics needed to implement such a system. And it was discussed and decided that the amount would be an additional $20,000 of the stipend, and this would be prorated for this year, and the wage would be 14,61 cents with the bike up per and unemployment as a total of $17,446.
Okay, so the base amount is $20,000 a year.
Yes.
The Hanifin report you referred to, was it given to us? We had it prior to
Yes.
the budget, and we referred to it during budget as Table 35.
Yes.
Mr. Hanifin recommended a full-time EMS director. He allocated as much as like $75,000.
For the full-time, right. We're not at that point now to go full-time.
No, I think it's good to take steps.
Yeah.
So this is before the recommendation of Hanifin.
Yes, and this would be, this would come out of the EMS lead month.
Is this Jason?
Yes. Are you sure about that?
He sure does. Maybe then we all can afford to buy the EMA.
Well, he'll be double dutying on, on what he's doing already.
I think it's a good transition.
Yeah. He has the, the knowledge and the background for it. Otherwise, if they don't do this, all the contracts, they, they get shoved my way, and I don't have the expertise to tell EMS directors of, of the entities what they're supposed to be doing, or to monitor them, or, you know, to keep an eye on it. And I think that would be the great person to do the EMS.
So what's the situation with the DIL program?
With the DIL program right now, I honestly don't know myself. I don't know.
We're not in a position to address that tonight, I don't believe, but I think we're hard in a position to address having someone to oversee the EMS for the county. This is not the logical way to go. Is there a motion to approve this for commissioners, EMA, for EMS Lit?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose nay?
Nay.
Motion passes with a nay from Glenn and Dennis.
Thank you.
Next is community corrections. Is there a point of voting there? Paul's on guilty. Leah, are you presenting?
Yes. Leah Bailey presenting for the voting department. This is just a transfer from the part-time wages line. He wants to split it $3,000 into office supplies and $7,000 into the weights and measures contract.
Is there a motion to approve this transfer?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Glenn, did you second that?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose nay? Motion passes.
Community corrections. We were notified by the Department of Corrections that the fund numbers needed to change. So these are just a reduction in the old fund numbers and an additional in the new fund numbers. No additional money. We're just moving the appropriation.
Is there a motion to approve this?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Prosecutor, at budget time, she missed a salary increase, and this is, it would take a toll of $1,235 to get this victim advocate where she should be for the year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose nay? Motion passes.
Nicole Bailey, there's director of planning and zoning. First one I have tonight is a request for additionals. This would be through the park board, and with the stellar program that Dearborn County has been designated with, through the course of those, and in working with the park board, we are trying to help them continue to maneuver forward with their board, also to provide some staff for that board. And for example, they are required to do a five-year park plan. They are behind in that. My department has helped them with that to get that into the state IDNR for review, which is required for the stellar part of the program as well, and for any future grants. And they must make that every five years to keep in good standing with state and federal funding. We would also like to help the park board with their approaches on getting rentals and charging for the rental spaces in the parks to help with taking in some money to make improvements at those parks, to keep that updated. Also, for any cleaning that may need to take place for deposits and such of that, and to be able to take those reservations and those, those monies for that effort, and to be able to provide them at their park board meetings, any paper supplies that they would need. Someone from our department would attend those meetings. More likely it would be me. And then also, what will be included in that would be help through the stellar program, redoing the contracts, helping them through the public meetings that are required for it, and going through the construction phase, anything as we move forward through those projects. So, the, when I was working on the five-year park plan for the park board, this was one of their requests to try to get a director or a position that would be able to help them as their citizens and volunteers, and to be able to help them move forward with some things that they want to be able to do. I see this as a stepping stone, is why I offered to try to do this for them, to see if it grows into anything, or if it's something strictly for a part-time use, at least staff to be able to help them out. So that's what our additional is for, is for some salaries, some office supplies, software, just to be able to help them facilitate through the year.
Nicole, do you anticipate, is this a prorated amount for this year, or will it be a similar amount for future years, or is it just the...
This was a prorated amount for 2025. I was looking at them putting that into their budget for the following years to see how we progressed, and if things needed to, if it was working out, if things needed to go further, we would jump those hurdles when needed. If they needed a more part-time person to help them if their needs started to grow, if this was to be a success in their ventures that they're wanting to do, it's just a step to try to see where we can go with this help for them.
And there's no administrative fees that you can take advantage of through the stellar program to allow that to cover these expenses, is there?
No.
So this money you're wanting, they're wanting to take out of the park budget, and how did, where do they do, where do they get their supplies at now? And how did you figure that?
Themselves. So what I did is tried, tried to figure out as far as even what I've done to date with some of the paper supplies, the copies out of our office, to help them with that five-year plan, the emails that we've gone back and forth with IDNR, phone calls and stuff like that. And it's just a estimate right now to try to work towards getting things up and running for accepting phone calls and accepting reservations and stuff like that.
And then the money, the salary supplements, is that, is that, you're asking the park board to reimburse...
I was asking for additionals to be able to move forward with this on that.
So where?
Out of county general.
Out of county general to the park board budget.
Okay, so, so where, where's the, where's the salary money going to?
That would be going to my staff, so in turn.
Above, above my board, but to make a note.
That is correct.
How would they be working additional hours, or?
So that would be as far as taken except, above, not above hours, but above eternal phone calls. So what we're anticipating is adding a separate line that is strictly for the park board, that would be able to take those reservations, working with their, their internet or their website consultant they have, to be able to either take those online or to accept those reservations. We would also be using our equipment in office to be able to take those monies in, to be converted to their information. The collections that would be taken in for that, the staff that we have, would be turning those in on a daily basis as well.
So they would be doing this during regular business hours?
That is correct.
So wouldn't that be taken away from planning and zoning for...
Well, it's with the phone calls that we get, the phone calls that are added into there. But that is with us being a five-member staff right now, we see it as a stumble, or a starting block if we go as the year progresses. And I see that it's a, we've maybe done an outstanding job on this, and that there's something else needed. I want to be able to do that at the, at the end of the year, to be able to adjust that if there's something else that's needed. But I do think they absolutely need some help.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just wondering if we're gonna be able to do a good job of being planning and zoning and do the help, the, the park board. And we're gonna still be working a 35-hour week, but we're giving people raises for not, not any additional time, basically, other than you attending the meetings.
Mm-hmm.
So how did you come up with the, with the salary amount?
Well, I went through as far as just some time adjusted for those phone calls, and with that, and then some work that would be assisted with me and the zoning administrator with the plan itself, and the information that would be coming in for the stellar program as the contracts come in, any bid processes that we would have to help, also assist those supplies for this first year. And then for the office manager and the ladies that sit up front, that would be the phone call areas. I just base it on a few hours a week through the end of the year, and it may be more than that. I, I underdid it, but I didn't want to overdo it because I think it's gonna take some time to work out the piece in getting the public aware of the information and the process for certain stuff.
So they'll, they'll, your proposal actually giving the people a raise, not put money from the park board and taking it out of planning and zoning then?
Yeah, it would come out of a budget from the park board to assist in the assistance with them.
But will planning and budget, planning and zoning's budget for salaries remain the same? Basically, are the people...
We would remain, so if this were to leave, so say in two years, I figured there's a lot that needs to go on. They need at least a part-time assistant for themselves. It would go away. So this is to help kind of maybe make it forward.
So if somebody's, one of your staff's making $10 now, and the park board's putting in $2, are they gonna be making $12, or are they reimbursing the planning and zoning for the time they're spending, is what I'm getting at?
They're, I would see it as reimbursing for time planning and zoning is sitting on it.
So they're not getting, we're not giving them a raise. We're just, we're just switching dollars.
I, because I would see it as if this were to go away, it's like a raise. Well, raise.
It is like a raise. I put it in the park board budget separate, so if this ever goes away, I can say, nope, all that park money is...
So we aren't paying people more money for doing the same hours of work?
Yes.
Okay.
But how much of this can it detract from their, their planning and zoning duties?
Probably long-term a bad idea to, to do this.
I think short-term it's a bad idea, because I've got, you know, I also know that the county highway has two people, Mr. Grobey can answer this, basically dedicated to the park during the season. And the park board also uses their equipment, the hall or whatever, they're pulling trailers with private vehicles, and I've seen them do that. They're using equipment that they probably aren't chained, are trained on, that belongs to the county. Are they doing it, or your guys are doing it for them?
We do the work, the maintenance, but the park board does use the equipment.
Yeah, I do that.
If we're not using it.
Yeah, but you guys help mow their grass?
We do, all of them. We don't help. We do it. Two guys.
That's kind of the same thing, but they're not, they're not getting stipends for going and doing that, right?
No, I'm just paying them. The highway department's paying two guys to go mow the park.
Double-dipping for the same amount of hours. I mean, because they're coming out of county general for planning and zoning. But Tim's losing two fellows.
Yeah.
They could, they could use on the road.
And whenever they're doing what she's proposing that they do, they're not gonna be doing the regular job, right? So that's...
The problem is, I don't think the park board's got the capability of...
Yeah, they probably need to hire a part-time person.
Doing what she's saying that they're gonna do, as currently, I mean, they're volunteers. But should the taxpayers be paying that?
Well, absolutely. I mean, they are, they have a budget, you have a general. The park board has monies that the county...
They aren't, they aren't, they aren't with the salary. I mean, these people are basically salary people you're gonna use for the park boards, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's coming out of the taxpayer, not out of the park board.
Now, Tim, do, do they do something like that for you, the park board? Do you get money from them to manage it for them or anything?
I do get a stipend from the park board. I do get a stipend from the park board to manage all their maintenance. We take care of the plumbing issues and everything.
And that goes to you personally, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's basically the same.
That was set up by the commissioner, Mr. Thatcher, kind of facilitating that.
I mean, if she don't do it...
Who's gonna do it?
You're gonna have to hire somebody, you're gonna have to hire somebody outside to contract.
You used to have a guy named Jim Reddell who did the five-year plan. Jim's been on that board, and they've acknowledged.
Do they rent the facilities now?
No.
They, they rent, they rent them, but they're in charge.
A fellow called me, his mother-in-law called, used Gladys Russell. They wanted to charge her $750 to use the barn in Gladys Russell for a family reunion, and they're Dearborn County taxpayers.
I think, we, I don't know where, Lou would have told him that because...
Whoever answered the phone.
Yeah, I'm not sure, because they haven't taken in any money, the people that I've talked to as far as renting. That's what we were, that's what I had found, tried to find out too before, and that's why I talked to Leah and Connie, because they do have a donation spot on their website. And I was trying to find out if they were to go make a reservation for one of the parks, but there's no, there's no fee on that. It's automatically go to a calendar, you put your name, your information, and that space is rented.
The park board has been working for a number of years to establish a system to charge a fee, which I think is only appropriate, but I don't know if they've ever actually been able to implement it yet.
It's all incumbent for cities and towns to assist the park with mowing and maintenance. It happens everywhere. It sounds like the same thing's going on here in different counties.
What were you gonna say?
Is there a timeframe on the five-year plan?
So if it's not done every five years, exactly every five years, then you lose your ability for any grants or additional funding.
I mean, you're, you're start working now. Is there like a deadline when it's gotta be cut down?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, because it's all, right now it's all coinciding with the stellar program, and they're working with us because it wasn't started on until, I believe it was about October, when we started talking about it and realized that there was no master plan for it, master plan for the park board. So I worked on it for about a month and a half and got it to the state. I've just now received the comments, and I have to turn around and try to get it back into, within a month, so that we're not losing ground on the timeframe for the stellar program.
And, and...
And it hasn't been done since 2017.
Stellar program, how do, how do we get this? I mean, I know we got approved that we, we won that, or we're awarded that. How does that money come to us?
So right now, what the park board is looking for is the land and conservation part of the, there's multiple agencies that are a part of the stellar program. The Bright Meadows Park is looking at where it's a one-to-one match, up to $8 million. So it's, there's still an application process, but what it is, is it's not competitive because we've been named stellar. So we don't have to compete with 20 other communities to be, we just have to meet the eligibility of the application. So that's what the stellar program...
Is there a timeframe on that money, too? Or, I know we got it, we got awarded it.
Yeah, so the deadline...
When does that run out, when the money runs out, or does that go on for years, or how's that play?
Is it three years?
Well, it's three to five years, I believe. It depends, and it depends on which grant you're going for. So, because there are different agencies and different grant portions of the whole stellar as a whole, each one has a different deadline. So for the park board, the application deadline is August 1st. But just with the other parts of that program, there will, there's many other deadlines that all the communities are working on at the same time. So, and then like this particular one for the park board, it's almost a year process for the review of the application because it goes through the state and federal. So we probably won't hear back from, if there's things that need adjusted and stuff like that, until next fall.
How much did we propose when we were going for stellar? Wasn't it like $750,000? $375, $375 with their match, is that right, Mike?
We calculated $350,000 was committed from various sources.
So we would get $700,000 spent with the matches.
Yeah, but fundraising can continue.
Yes.
Mike, can you go up here and talk, please? All right. Thank you.
Mike, over on your board. The fundraising can continue beyond even when the application goes.
So we can keep getting funds all the way to a million dollars? We could, we could get a million dollars and they would match it with a million if, if we're, I mean, if everything's in order, okay?
You know, that million dollars can come from a variety of local sources. So as we, and we have several already, there should be in for this project redevelopment, $100,000, private donation, community foundation contribution toward the project.
Which is part of the reason why it was so important that the park board reevaluate the five-year plan, to throw anything in there that they think might be something that the park board is interested in. Not that they have to do anything that's in the five-year plan, but if it's not including the five-year plan, I believe it's ineligible for those IDNR stellar dollars.
Sounds like time is of the essence now. This, we need to get this plan.
Well, the five-year plan not only is for the, it's needed quickly for the stellar program, but the five-year plan will continue every five years. And that is important because the park board, so the years that have, the plan has not been in place, those are years that are potentially grants have been missed, missed opportunities to have certain improvements at the parks.
And the five-year plan also includes all the parks, not just Bright Meadows, which is the stellar project.
That is correct, yeah.
Well, the point I was saying earlier, the park board currently couldn't do that on their own.
They can't do that.
No, and, and...
They'd have to hire someone.
And then from an efficiency standpoint, for them to hire a part-time person, I mean, this is a $9,000 line item. For her to have folks with various levels of expertise who can take on pieces of it and do it while they're in the business of their normal operating day, to answer the phones and do some additional things, is the most efficient way. Conversation that sounds like we're having is, is that something that's eligible for an additional stipend versus is that part of your regular, your regular responsibilities, because it's not above and beyond your 35 hours? And we have that conversation multiple times with different department heads, and like, like you mentioned, Mr. Grobey has a stipend for managing the parks. I don't know if that's any additional time, but it's definitely additional responsibility and stress, and so that is something that is eligible for additional pay. This is, in my opinion, is either gonna come from this area, or it's gonna come directly from the park board. You're the, seems like the most efficient way, and we can try this for short-term.
There could be a way of coming out of county general. Yeah, it is, but it's, it's all gonna come out of county general account, whether it's planning and zoning or parks.
Right.
So that, that's not really a consideration right now, but I think that it's still time of the essence. They don't have that ability to do it. So that, that's not really a consideration right now, but I think that it's still time of the essence. They don't have that ability to do it in-house. And we need to.
This needs done, and it needs done now.
It sounds like it to me.
And, and if it's taking too much time away from planning zoning, park board's gonna have to hire a part-time person or something.
And I plan on either relating that to them or to the county council later on to be able to see. Because I, if this works well, and I hope it does. I would be of the opinion that it needs to go to either a part-time person that is one hundred percent with, to the parks or is a full-time position. But I, there's a stepping stone that I think needs to have to be able to evaluate whether, how much time that is needed. And if it's worth it in the long run.
How long have we got on the five-year plan? It's been another year. You had one five years ago and ten years ago.
We haven't had one since two thousand seventeen.
I'll look at my phone and see what they have five more.
Yeah, because when Jim Reddell was on.
And he was the one doing it, yes.
But there's no expertise on the board now to do it in-house. So.
I got a question. On December fifth, the park board unanimously approved for a group to have a bright community festival in the park. Unanimously approved it. The people on that committee worked on that stuff. And then all of a sudden on March the seventh. They got an email that says, no, you are no longer approved. So what's the story on that?
For this year. So on that date, they had their attorney reviewing a contract, a lease contract that they had created for those days to have the bright festival, which was for the end of July. The entities that were named in that contract had yet, not been yet created. So they couldn't even sign the contract to move forward. So the park board felt that the time was squeezing in to be able to, to make that happen this year. So they wanted to not do this year, but continue working towards it to do for next year. That way things were properly set up that they could move forward with that.
Why weren't they notified between December and March?
I don't, because I don't think the contract was up, because the, at the March meeting, that's when the attorney was, had reviewed the contract and that's when they talked about the contract.
But they gave them unanimous approval in December. They went ahead and started planning for a festival. And you didn't let them know till March?
That, that is before I got involved as far as, I was just doing the stellar. When I approached, had that meeting, I was in attendance to that meeting. I wasn't in attendance to their December meeting. I think they voted to move forward with the process, but they can't move forward with the, they didn't feel that they could move forward with the contract, the lease contract that would, for the liability purposes and any damages and stuff like that. I don't think they were ready to move forward with that contract and didn't believe there was enough time to put that all together to do that.
But Purk, yes, and Ray Ubank, both attorneys worked on that contract together. And they were under the assumption that yes, we're going ahead.
Bob, you may get at least at the meeting and said that the entities weren't even created and couldn't even move forward with the contract. Because there was no legal entities. They were named on paper, but they hadn't been created yet. So they technically, even at that meeting, if they were ready to sign the contract, they couldn't because the entities weren't, hadn't been created.
So is this gonna become a habit with the park board?
No, I believe they want to move forward with it. They, they were looking forward to it, but I think the timeframe to get that organized by July was squeezing in and they didn't feel that they could get the contract signed to move forward with it by July.
I think, I think the park board and all entities involved, including the county, should be concerned about the liability and exposure that we put ourselves out in front of. And I think, I wasn't at the meeting. It sounds like it's basically like a memorandum of understanding. We're happy to move forward, but until the entities are set up, we can't legally enter into a contract.
Well, and I think we got the same liability with volunteers using county equipment, hauling up and down the road. Yeah, we need county employees looking on the trailers, hauling stuff wherever it needs to go. Not volunteers with their own personal vehicles.
Yep.
Because if you get out there on US fifty or something and they're bad wrecked, everything gonna come after.
That's right.
See, Miss Popovich, Dearborn County is about to cause a war.
So we have a request for the planning and zoning for a total of ten thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to assist the Gilbert County Parks with their five-year plan and the requirements of stellar. Is there a motion to approve this request?
Considering, I don't think they can do it without help.
Yeah, why don't they do that?
Do what?
Why don't they just hire our part-time employees to do all this stuff?
It's still gonna be.
Still coming out of county general where it's kind of.
It's coming out of park board.
Park board and planning and zoning.
Last year, but in some way, park board money go from one percent to three percent.
That's, that's a separate fund. We're talking about county general. And they do have county general monies. So there's, planning zoning has, you know, twelve, if not all, everybody did this, but it's out of county general. The park board has money that comes out of county general and out of county farm for day-to-day type of stuff. The money that's for the riverboat monies that goes to the park board is for capital improvements and land acquisition, not for this sort of thing. So we do have a motion. Is there a second to approve this ten thousand five twenty for planning and zoning to help the park board?
I'll second it.
Is that Tim?
Yes.
The motion is second. All those in favor, say the party saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Dan made the motion.
I second that.
Should we ask for a?
You want to roll the all vote, Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Glenn?
No.
Dennis?
No.
Mark?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. And are you presenting for nine-one-one?
Yes, I am.
So on, for nine-one-one software. This is to help with GIS data that is used by nine-one-one services. We had a contract with DataMark prior. It actually expired in September of two thousand twenty-four. This was usually set up by Jared. I knew about, well, I used the program, so I knew it, but I didn't know when it expired. When Jared left, I was contacted by DataMark and said, hey, did you realize that it expired? I said, no. So we got into the, because we had a five-year contract prior. And I asked them to go ahead and look at an additional five-year contract. This is for their services and a, what they call a VEP editor. This goes through and there's a couple of different things that it does as we work towards. He has standards and ninety-nine, ninety-eight percent accuracy with the information. We can run a validation as often as we want with this program, find issues with addressing. Find issues with, it would either be address points, center lines, there's boundaries related to EMS, fire, police. There's ESN boundaries that are associated with that. All that works together as, when it goes into the call center for nine-one-one. It routes tracks, it is the quickest routes also for nine-one-one and the emergency services. So the more accurate the information, the better it is for nine-one-one. So we use this program to validate often that and find the problems that are associated with addressing to improve. We started this over five years ago as Indiana had made an announcement that in the future they were going to want counties to be NINA, or meet NINA standards, which is the National Numbering Association for Addressing. They wanted to be the whole state and all the counties within the state to meet those standards. Me and Jared started that back when they made that announcement that they were gonna require it. They haven't said what date they were gonna require, but we've started that process. And in the paperwork, I don't know if you received it, but with this information and with the program and the steps that we are taking, the state recognizes counties for their GIS information being as accurate as possible. In two thousand twenty-one, we started off as a silver star, which we were one of fifteen counties. And in two thousand twenty-two, we moved up to gold star standards, which means most of our layers match the state and NINA standards requirements. They're correctly populated within the state's information as well. We were one of fourteen counties at that time. In two thousand twenty-three, we still maintain our gold star standard, but we were one of twenty-eight. And as of two thousand twenty-four, they have now put an additional platinum star to strive for. And there's only currently fourteen counties, which we believe after working with this, we will hopefully reach that within two thousand twenty-six with our data. And be recognized within the state as having close to accurate information as possible for nine-one-one services.
Who has access to that information?
So as far as editing rights or viewing rights?
Viewing.
So viewing, so there are a lot of information, there is a lot of information that is on the Beacon mapping website for the county.
So that, this is integrated with that, with the Beacon slide?
Absolutely. So for instance, if, so if you see an address point, you may only see an address point on the surface. But actually in the background, there are thirty fields to an address point. So, and it's set up so that it can work with the center lines, it can work with PSS. So it's zip code related, MSAG related. East, east park. So all those go in a field.
Who edits all that?
So I do the center lines, I do the addressing. We also do help with the boundary layers that are the ESN layer, the fire EMS. So recently when there was a, I believe, yes, EMS layers were changed. I went in there to make those changes and then it works with nine-one-one information on that end. Then their system works separately of that. So this validation program ensures that we are working towards those and finding those anomalies. This is also gonna work with, I'm currently in the process of filing for a seed grant as well. And that will, which the state does, through the state. And they're kind of ensuring that every county gets a part of this because they're really pushing. You can submit from now, from January until January twenty-sixth. They are awarding eight counties per month. And if you don't win that month, you're still in the draw for the next month and the next month and the next month. And then once you are awarded, you have a year to complete. So we are also working with DataMark and they are going to run the full validation for us. They are going to give us all the issues upfront. They're going to fix any boundary overlaps, gaps that we have within that year through that grant program as well.
How much was their contract last five years?
It was three to four thousand a month or a year. Take that back and it's risen to ten thousand a year.
Is there any, any other players in that game that we can get quotes from or not?
I will tell you this, through the seed program and I think with just the Indiana geographic information system through this grant. DataMark is the one that they are using for all validation.
So they get a double and a half the price for five years?
Well, the, oh, five years with the programs and the way they upgrade them and everything like that, I can see it. The one thing that's nice about getting the contract signed in five years is that we maintain that price over the five years. Instead of having to worry about whether or not they're gonna raise it a percentage or not.
Yeah, the cost maybe.
Yes.
Any other questions for the call? Is there a motion to approve the fifty thousand dollars out of county general for this?
And that'll be over the next five years. So it'll be ten thousand this year.
Ten thousand a year?
Yes.
Will we approve the ten thousand or fifty thousand?
If we do ten thousand this year, we could put it into the budget, but at least with the contract being over twenty-five thousand too. We took this to the commissioner's team to you for recognizing the contract. But the additional would be for the ten thousand and the additional years we would put into the nine-one-one budget.
So it sounds like to me if we were to approve it for the five-year period, it'd be locking in the costs. Do we pay it over period five years?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve that?
Liz, you have an opinion on the fund? Looks like we have the riverboat contingency listed as well.
I would be county general. I'd recommend it to the county general.
Liz, if we do the fifty thousand, we could just encumber each year.
Okay.
Because that's what was advertised.
This is detrimental to maintaining nine-one-one accuracy for calls. It's something we can't, in my opinion. So I'll make a motion to approve this out of county general for fifty thousand over five years.
Is there a second? At the end of the discussion, all those in favor, say the party saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the health fund. This is correct to grant. Here, you presenting for the health fund.
For the local public health services fund, this is just a request to make their budget whole. At budget time, they weren't sure how much money they were gonna get approved from the state. And it was three thousand, forty-five thousand percent short from what they had cleared up.
So simply need a motion to make that direction. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'm sorry.
Thank you guys. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say the party saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And they've also got a grant request.
So this is a health grant and it's the CDC Foundation Grant for Teens to Health Care. And what Amy explained to me is there were only six in the nation awarded, two were here in Indiana and one is ours. And what they do is four hundred and eighty thousand, but it's only, I think it's eighty thousand a year for six years. And once you're awarded, then they do like a think tank and they decide what the money should be used on to help these teens. You know, if it's mental health or whatever, but it sounds like it's a program and there's no county match.
Is there a motion to approve this grant?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor, say the party saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is that what part of the agency?
Yes, yours.
Fine, you know who wrote the grant request?
Amy. She does all, she does, she's done a great job. She does. She's been great at this job too.
One or two departments remain here for.
The big, big thresholds and environmental health.
We've finally settled documents to require signatures later in the meeting. So I'm gonna ask that everyone just bear with us and we'll sign as we go along, so we don't miss anything. Next on our agenda is highway.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Allen, I wish you the best. I have two requests tonight. One for thirty thousand dollars and that is for our equipment repair budget. To make it whole. Again, we spent a fortune through the winter, Texas try. The bad winter we've had, we've spent a fortune trying to keep everything on the road again.
Let's just take these one at a glance. The person with thirty thousand dollars, is this your fair vehicles or?
Yes, equipment.
So I know you said you're considering maybe to make the equipment because of all the, so guys who have issues. of all the summer guys who've had issues.
Mr. Gray, was it two new trucks we appropriated for this year?
We got, we got four. We haven't run the road yet.
Not on the road yet.
Because of just trying to build.
Will we roll any of the old ones off? And if so, is there any trade-in value or anything that does?
There's not. We run to their, um, we got, we had an auction here recently. Uh, we sold one of our trucks. It was a two thousand eight, we got five thousand dollars for it.
So I guess the question I was going to ask is are these repairs on trucks that are going to be rolling out? Are these trucks that are going to be on our fleet for a little while?
A little while. We're trying to back burner what we, what we think we're going to get rid of, because we're in hope of next season, we're going to have, uh, four new trucks on the road. So those four trucks, we've already kind of set aside. Can we still use them? Yes, we do. We use them in limited, more limited, since winters kind of over.
Are we, we're going to get, are we going to, um, remove some then from the fleet?
Yes, there will be some gone, yeah.
How many total trucks do you have?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. How many drivers do you have?
Twenty-six.
Is there a motion to approve this, uh, request for thirty thousand dollars for repair to vehicles?
I'll move.
And this will be out of County General. So, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor who say the same, aye?
Aye.
Next, please.
Our, our next one, uh, is to kind of make my budget solvent. Uh, we took aggregate money out to buy salt. We ran out of salt money budget, or budget money, you know, our salt budget. So we took aggregate money because we could move that down in that line item and, and we used that. And we're trying to, I'm asking the money back in aggregate to, uh, make that fund whole again, so we can do all of our projects this summer.
Because you had to buy your salt?
Yes.
And how, how much was it? You, you told me before and I didn't think I got all that.
We, we went through, uh, close to three hundred fifty, uh, um, I mean, thirty-five hundred tons this year almost.
So that's like fifteen hundred more tons than normal, you said.
Yeah, it's like fifteen hundred tons more than normal. Uh, we spent our whole contractor's budget, because we do bright in some subdivisions in the southern area too, with contractors now, because we don't want to have as many people as we used to. And, uh, we spent that whole budget out. I'm not here to, you know, ask for that, because we don't need it till next year. We'll deal with that at budget time and all this. But, yeah, we spent, uh, you know, our whole contract out. Uh, we spent like forty-two thousand dollars during that big snow on overtime. I mean, we spent a lot of money this year on, what, a lot of money.
It was a whole one.
Yeah, I don't know if it's still, I don't know if it's over yet.
No, it's over.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you for the compliment.
So you're looking at seventy-five thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
To make that whole.
To make that aggregate budget whole.
Fund eleven sixty-nine, is there a motion to approve this request?
I'll move.
Thank you, Dan. And thank you, uh.
Thanks.
Motion, a second motion by Dan, second by, uh, motion by Dan, second by Glenn to approve the cut down of the water for my city. All in favor of this, keep up saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Tim, I got a question. You guys, your aggregates are also used like in the parks, the parking lots?
Uh, we haven't, no. We have not done that. We, we, we need to be qualified on that. We have used some of the patch. We have used some aggregate on the path that goes back to the shooting, to make that long driveway.
Right.
We have used some stone on that. Uh, we replaced culvers on that drive too. Um, but as far as actually doing, we, we, we haven't done a re, like a reclamation of the parking lots or anything. We have not. We do spray them all with, you know, herbicide and then we do all that. Um, so we try to take care of it as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Wester.
I'm Liz, Red County Engineer. I'm asking for an additional hundred thirty, hundred twenty-five thousand for, uh, a whole or repair, uh, for, uh, doing, uh, protect epoxy overlays and repairs. Be numerous bridges in the county, basically we're trying to spend the life of the bridges by, uh, doing some patchings and going to repair, and then doing the thin epoxy overlays, basically trying to seal the decks of the concrete bridges to, uh, to seal them, so eliminate the salts from going down through the decks and getting it resealed and deteriorating the bridges. So we don't have to do bridge deck replacements like we're going to have to do on North Bridge in the near future.
On which bridge?
Yeah. The big one there, uh, over Tanner Creek on North Bridge Bridge. I'll be coming back for funding on that, but the, uh, we'd look to try to do a bridge deck overlay. Uh, however, once we got out there and started doing, uh, uh, more sand went on the actual deck, the deck was, you know, uh, uh, doing an overlay because we're part of the placement, so we're going to sign that way, if we speak. Uh, we'll be coming back for, for money for doing that construction later. But right now, I have two hundred thousand dollars on my budget, uh, the estimates to do the structures that I'm requesting and trying to do this year, uh, around two hundred seventy thousand. That would then leave me with about fifty-five thousand dollars to do any repairs that are unforeseen between now and the end of the year. Uh, we did, uh, Mr. Greby, we're also looking at probably have a comeback in May, uh, to try to do something with the, uh, bridge, drive fork crossing at Lomond, that is getting very, very rough again. Uh, we can't patch it if that's the, uh, what's going to happen, depend on cost, but we are going to be looking at a, a concrete deck placement on top of that to try to fix that structure and make it that to last a lot longer.
Where is that one?
It's at the bottom of Lomond where, uh, Baby and Schmalz and Lomond all come together.
It's like a trisection, Baby, Schmalz and Lomond.
Basically, it's a very long, it's considered a bridge because of length of the crossing. It's basically to take drive fork.
Yeah.
And if, Dan, you've probably driven over it, we passed it, passed it, passed it.
Yeah.
And it's starting to get in a wrecked shape and, uh, I'm working with the contractor right now to get an estimate, couple contractors get estimates on what's going to take that to try to do a, uh, concrete overlay over top of that structure.
Mr. Wester, in these epoxy overlays, is that the same process you use on the bridge at the bottom of North Dearborn and Jameson Crossing?
Correct. Basically what happens is, it's which state uses, uh, basically what you do blacktop seal or for asphalt, we use what they call a two-part epoxy, thin epoxy overlay. Basically, the stone that you get actually comes out of Oklahoma, okay? Because of the hardness of the stone and the ingredients that you use. Uh, basically you do a two-part system. You sandblast the top of the structure off, get completely clean, then you come back with a first layer of thin epoxy overlay, followed by a layer of the rock. And then, uh, you let that dry and you go back and do a second seal to make sure you got a good thickness and you got a complete seal of that structure, so there's no way any salts, water can penetrate into that deck and part of the preserve of your bridges. Basically, it's a way to extend life for your bridges because of the cost to replace bridges and so on.
So obviously you've been happy with the product down there on that bridge?
Correct, and we've been happy with.
And how many structures?
We've got, so far, we've done about twenty-two structures that might, that meet the criteria to do this with. Uh, so you try to, try to do, is you try to go back and look at, uh, all your new structures that have been built now via this structure on Steepville Road, uh, the structure we're going to place on, uh, North Oger Road this year. Basically, what you do is you let them winter a couple of years, make sure you get all your shrinkage crackies done, and then you come back and do your overlay. So you try to do it anywhere between two to five years after the bridge is constructed to try to extend the life of that structure. It's a lot cheaper to do a thin epoxy overlay than to do a complete, uh, latex, uh, acylco overlay, or in the case of your bridge, bridge replacement, or deck replacement.
You mentioned doing some repairs on some existing bridges out of this.
This is the same bridge as I'm going to pack due to seal on. I want to go in and do all the joints, and there's some, there's some repair work at the joints that need to be done, concrete repairs prior to us putting epoxy.
So, so are you doing this on some older bridges too, then you're repairing?
Correct, it's basically pribble, pribble, pribbles an example.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, so pribble's still in good enough shape that we can go do the joints and, uh...
So last year, we, we allocated a hundred fifty thousand, and then in budget time, we did two hundred thousand, and now you're asking for a hundred twenty-five additional, so that'll be three twenty-five.
Correct.
Instead of the one fifty that we've been doing in the past year, so you're...
Right now, because of everything else, we try to get what we need and what's age-wise appropriate to get done, uh, we're looking at right now, the estimate I have is about two hundred seventy thousand. So North Dearborn, another one we're going to do is North Dearborn, down there, come between Dualesis and One, to come down the hill to Big Bridge right there. So some of the structures, we're doing a very large structure compared to some little ones we've done in the past. But I want to try to save the ones we can. Uh, Chesterville out there, off of, uh, Lower Gillsboro, that structure right there, that's another one on the list to be done.
Sounds like maybe what Mr. Bill's asking about is, maybe might try to forecast better next year if we know how many bridges are at that sweet spot of two, three winters that we've gone through, that we can try to appropriate better at budget time.
Well, I seen you asked for two fifty and whatever reason, I think we cut it to two hundred thousand. So that's what, I, I don't remember why anymore, because we've been pitching that.
Probably because it's a two-bridge, okay? It's, it, my fund's two-bridge, it's where it is, so when I have to come back for additional funds, I have to come back and look at different, you know, accounts. So we just, so we just waited till we knew more what the costs were actually physically going to be when we came out, so.
And underneath that item, Paul, there's a separate line item for several different bridges. That definitely might be unofficial to put that in there instead of under culvert repair, which is really nothing to do with what we're doing here, right?
Well, it's, the way it's lined, it should be, the line item should read bridge slash culvert repair, okay? Because basically, anything, I mean, can be done on small structures as well as bridges, small structures being less than twenty foot, bridges being over twenty foot. So really, it, it doesn't, and then if, depending on what the other repairs are, I mean, I could be a small structure repair. If I lost, I lost a wing wall on an old bridge, it needed to be contracted work and replace a wing wall, or some kind of undercutting underneath the structure where it's getting scholar critical, then we'd have to do repair work. That's all paid out as contracts, culvert repair, just the way it's worded in, I guess, the way it's coded into the system. But that's what it is, is bridge culvert repair and it's contract work, stuff that can't be done through Mr. Greby, through our other items.
Thank you for the explanation. This was, uh, advertised out of the Riverboat Forty-nine sixteen for this, for one twenty-five re, re, bridge deck epoxy overlays and repairs. Is there a motion to approve this request?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor who say the same, aye?
Aye.
Jose, motion passes.
You're up.
Next on our agenda is, uh, we're going to open a public hearing for New Orleans Economic Revitalization Area. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anyone from the public position to speak on this? County, you got any requests? If there's no one from the public wanting to speak, then we can close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor who say the same, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is, uh, two thousand twenty-five dash C zero three, Confrontment Resolution of the Delaware County Council Confirming Designation of Certain Area of the Indian Road Drive Revitalization Area of President. Presentation will be by Mr. Deacon, uh, one of Dearborn, of Delaware County Rebuild Commission, and, uh, my proder, from one Dearborn set thread.
Mr. Deacon will take it from here for the round.
I'm, uh, Jim Deacon, the credo of the Delaware County Rebuild Commission. And, uh, my purpose this afternoon is to support Water Industries in their request for tax abatement.
So what?
Water Industries. We have had the...
The first part is going to be the resolution confirming that area as a revitalization area.
Sure.
Who has that, uh, ordinance?
I do.
Okay.
I got a hundred and two things.
Did he ask a question?
I think Jim wanted to make a statement, yes.
So, you, there's two resolutions that they need to consider tonight.
Right, two separate resolutions.
We'd like to hear from Mr. Deacon, as well as the company, and, uh, some of the matter experts that are here tonight prior to any of the two votes, that's at your discretion list.
Well, I think we need, we need to take it one at a time. I mean, it seems like we would need to do the revitalization before we can even do the abatement. You can't do the abatement without the first one.
They go hand in hand, so it's really...
He's talking about letting them do their presentation.
Sure.
Yeah. Actually, as you did say, about the same thing for both of them.
Okay.
Uh, the, uh, revitalization area was basically so that we could have, uh, the means it takes to go in and redo the road that would be going in to the, to the area and to do the railroad cause. And, uh, we, we were here a month ago and we addressed the same subject. And there were some concerns raised at that time, and concerns that are going to influence both of you, like the creation of the revitalization area and the tax abatement. So the presentation, I don't like, you do, you really impact both of those. And the concerns that were raised at the last meeting pretty caused us to, uh, consider ensuring the proposed water withdrawals and wastewater discharge charges that significantly are possibly going to be impacted river, the local, and the aquifer for the uses of either one of those. And that was something that we decided we wanted to make sure we were guarding against. We were really enthused about this project and what it was going to bring us. We didn't want to bag funds together. We really wanted a ninety thousand square foot building, we really wanted thirty-two thousand, twenty, twenty, twenty-eight million dollars in, in, in investment and a hundred and thirty jobs coming into the area. We were excited about that, but we were presented with some challenges that we wanted to overcome. To do that, we decided to go to an independent third party, a third party, that would be Intera. And we contracted with, uh, Intera. They assigned two licensed engineers who are both hydrologists to take a look at this project and determine what effect it would have on the, uh, groundwater, the aquifer, and all its neighbors who are impacting on that water. So at this point, I'd like to turn this over to the, uh, engineers who did the study and let them describe what they determined in, uh, their independent third-party analysis.
Thank you.
To it, please.
Thanks for the intro, Jim. My name is Brad Moore. I'm with the company called Intera. I'm here with my colleague Brad Schrader. We're going to talk about, uh, the results of our analysis of the potential impacts on the water resource of Project Fresh. I've got quite a few sides to do here, so I'll go kind of rapidly and then, of course, answer any questions. Uh, first, uh, just going to talk about the goals of the analysis and, uh, an overview of Project Fresh as it relates to water withdrawals. Uh, then I'm going to talk about the potential impacts of the proposed water use on the water resource. And then Brad is going to talk about the wastewater discharge impacts, and then he'll conclude with results, uh, in a summary. So the project objectives were twofold. We wanted to assess the potential impacts of the project on aquifer withdrawals on the resource and existing water users, and evaluate the potential water quality impacts to the river from the proposed wastewater facility. Just, uh, if you don't know, reminder of where it was located, upstream of Rest Harrison, the interchange of fifty and seventy-four, and I've noted that it's along the White White River. So an overview of the main components, uh, as Jim mentioned, is ninety thousand square foot processing facility. Uh, production wells on site provide cooling water and potable water supply, wastewater treatment plant to treat the, the water, the new... Uh, production wells on site provide cooling water and potable water supply, wastewater treatment plant to treat the, the water that needs to be treated. And the cooling water will do to let the cooling water stabilize the temperature for all of this to go to the river through permanent discharge, uh, down by the river. Uh, just so we know how much water we're talking about here, this is a, a water plus, water process flow chart, this has been evolving as the engineering has evolved on this project. Uh, they're gonna pump one point six NGD from wells for non-contact cooling, which will go to the lagoons, I mentioned, and then, uh, eventually out to the river when, when there's state water. We're gonna pump point two NGD, that's a million dollars per day, for a potable supply for turkey production in the offices. That will go to the wastewater treatment plant, and then on to, uh, the outfall through the permanent discharge.
And that's an onsite, what's.
Onside wastewater treatment, that's correct. So, I'm gonna talk about, uh, river flows and aquifer water levels. First question, what is the impact of the water withdrawals to the river? Well, the river and the aquifer are kind of one resource, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the, the, the aquifer first. So, the entire project is underlined by, uh, an outwash aquifer, it's called the Whitewater Valley Aquifer System. Uh, it's the most productive aquifer in the county. Uh, it's composed of sand and gravel that was positive by Glacier during this high-moody glacial melt. It filled the bedrock valleys. It's about twenty-five to seventy feet of, uh, sand and gravel in the area, and this is, like I said, good aquifer materials for, uh, withdrawals like this. So, the river and the aquifer are, are kind of one resource as we see it, uh, and the, the river interacts with the aquifer and production wells within the valley, uh, under the natural conditions like the schematic on the top. Uh, precipitation hits the ground surface, it percolates down to the water table, the water table rises, and creates gradient towards the river, that's what, uh, under natural conditions. If you put a well in there, the well will just intercept water on the way to the river, uh, uh, under its natural course. If you were to pump the, uh, the well higher or move it closer to the river, it can intercept this water as well as pull water from the river, we call this induced recharge. So, the project, uh, well, I'll get to that. So, let's look at flows in the river. Uh, there's a USGS stream gauge in Brookville below the confluence, below the dam, and they've been measuring flows daily since nineteen seventy-five, since the dam went into operation. So, this, uh, flow duration curve just shows the percentage of days the river flow equals or exceeds a certain value based on all the data since nineteen seventy-five. Uh, like the example shown here, fifty percent of the time, uh, flows in the river exceed five hundred NGD, just to kind of put the, the, the project, uh, withdrawals in, in some perspective. What we're really most interested in is the low flows, 'cause that's where it did impact the river the most, when there's little water in the river. Uh, low flows downstream of the project site are especially higher, 'cause there's about twenty miles between, between the river miles, fifteen and twenty, between the, the stream gauge and the project site. They're effectively higher than what is shown here due to, uh, tributaries, of course, uh, natural groundwater inflow, and then upstream discharge is coming into it. So, the planned withdrawals represent less than two point five percent of the lowest flows in the river, a small component, and I was gonna describe, most of this, uh, was affected by the river anyway. So, the proposed wells would intercept groundwater, they would have natural discharge of the river and induced recharge from the river, as I mentioned. Uh, the operation will affect the timing of flows to the river, it's not gonna affect the overall water balance. All the water used, uh, would eventually be discharged, uh, through the outfall, the only exception to this would be what would be lost through evaporation from the lagoons, and we would expect this to be just a miniscule amount. So, this is called consumptive use, uh, where the water's, whatever gone, but most of the water used will wind up back in the river, uh, uh, game in case. So, given that the low flows determine the river in excess of eighty NGD, the consumptive use would be a very, very small portion of the total river flow. So, what's the impact of water withdrawals on the groundwater levels and existing users? Uh, we thought, uh, a computer model just to kind of look at what the drawdown might be, you know, what is drawdown? Drawdown describes the drop in the aquifer level due to a pumping well. Uh, the drawdown would be highest near the pumping well and then pretty out, uh, beyond the well. Uh, this drawdown can affect any nearby wells, uh, as shown in the, in the schematic here. Uh, if the water levels drop below a pump, it could make the well immodible and affect it negatively. So, with this computer, computer model, we just looked at kind of a worst-case scenario of what those drawdowns might be due to the proposed pumping. This, uh, graph just shows a, a simulated simulation based on a worst-case scenario, and, uh, that result is, you know, the groundwater will be, uh, drawn down one to two feet in the surrounding area, uh, the surrounding parcels. There would be no impact to nearby registered high-capacity wells, so the zero foot contour would be the worst-case, uh, uh, extent of the effect of pumping. And City of Harrison production wells are well downstream, the nearest one upstream would be Harrison Sand, the aquifer would be unaffected by the worst-case scenario of this pumping. Uh, it's unknown if there are private wells in adjacent parcels, we kind of circle them square here, some places that might have, uh, private wells, there's no way to know if there's private well in the location. The high-capacity wells have to register with the state, but there, there could be private wells out there, there's still a private well, it could be impacted depending on well construction, that is, depending on deep it is, depending on where the pump is located. Uh, but if any private wells are negatively impacted, wastewater processing would be on the hook for, for mitigating that, if that is.
Is that an indefinite timeline, or is there a certain timeline that sunsets?
No, there, there's not an timeline. Uh, it would be on, on the hook for, uh, lowering somebody's pump if that were the case, or drilling a new well, or helping them get hooked up to municipal water.
Great, thank you.
So, you handed out the grant, discharge impacts?
Hi, I'm Brad Schrader. I'm gonna talk about potential impacts from discharging the treated water from the processing plant. So, as, uh, Rhett talked about, there's two different rolling water separations through the plant, so you have one point six NGD that would flow through a non-contact cooling system into the lagoons, they would warm up, and they would come to a single discharge point before going out. So, this water is, the general impact of this water receives is heat from the process, because the lagoon cools down and discharges it. And the second stream of water, which is point two NGD or two hundred gallons per day, that is actually part of the processing, and that's what would pick up, that needs to be treated really more severely than, than what would come out of it. That will also, then that will go through a separate water treatment plant, it'll join up with the outfall of the, um, lagoon, and then discharge at a single point into the river. All of this is controlled by, uh, NPS permit, which I'll talk a little bit more about in the next one. First, let's just look now, not at the cooling water, but the wastewater through the process, typically what we've seen, what, what's been observed in other, other other plants. Uh, the main thing you run into that would be a pollutant would be, uh, high levels of organic matter, so this is fat, oil, grease, proteins, and it all is kind of measured in biological oxygen demand. It's really the same type of waste as you give it a normal wastewater treatment plant, it's generally the same thing, our human waste has similar, similar amounts. What's different is the biological oxygen demand levels, which really sets the limit. What's coming out of this plant is around six hundred, eight hundred milligrams per liter before treatment. When a wastewater treatment plant's from a municipal, they're seeing about two hundred milligrams per liter coming in. So, this is having to treat about four times the strength of waste that's coming in from the municipal. So, it is higher than these organic matters that you'd find in a municipal facility. Some of the other parts that are typically regulated are total suspended solids, this is just to keep clarity of water fundamentally, and then ammonia, which is, you know, nitrogen or in, in the form of ammonia. And then, of course, bacteriological, you want to look at your bacteriological load, potentially, and then both types of facilities do a lot of this. So, the natural discharge elimination system comes out of the Clean Water Act, it's, uh, managed by the state, so in this case, IED manages this. They issue permits, so you cannot discharge into a water body of the state, which is what the river is that, without getting a permit. Typically, you, all your wastewater plants do this, your municipal plants have a permit to operate, they'll often receive industrial waste, which then they'll also treat. Also, you have industrial facilities, they'll also get their own permit, and it's managed the same way as a municipal facility is. So, in this case, IED sets limits on what you're allowed to discharge into the river to keep the river safe, and they're the ones that do that, and they set the limits, you know, and manage.
Go ahead, Seth.
That they're zooming in?
Yeah.
Then IED does that, so IED sets limits, and then they have reporting requirements where they're constantly reporting monthly and weekly outfall, and then, uh, IED will also come and do inspections on, on the plant and make sure it's operating well. So, they administer the whole program, they set the permit limits, and they come and do, and then they manage to make sure it's, you know, and issue them on, you know, and then they issue, if you exceed the permits, then you get into, you know, corrective actions and that kind of thing too. So, they're looking at that kind of process to deal with things. One thing to note here is that, so, there'll be really two different permits, because what's coming through the clearwater system, the one point six NGD, they're really only concerned generally with temperature and pH and CD, it's really the main thing that is, 'cause it isn't contacting anything, but it is warm, it changes pH. So, that's, that's looking at the one point six NGD, they'll measure that before it combines with the other ones. So, you have one level measuring right at the outfall of that, then you have a wastewater treatment plant, which will have its own limits of different things, that'll be measured before they combine. So, what they do is they measure each process and each waste stream, so otherwise, if you did it after they combined it, and you had a polluted, you'd be looking at it as a polluted waste, and they really wanna manage what's coming out of the process. So, for this, I know, as, as we did this last time, we, um, they're still don't have these NPS, IED's not set NPS permit limits on this yet, so this is gonna drive all the treatment processes, but they're in design to meet the limits. This is this, this company's facility in Harrison, so this is limits that were set by the Ohio EPA, so we would expect IED to do something, I'm not saying it's gonna do the same, but IED will follow the same processes of how the EPA, and they'll set limits. So, I won't go through the numbers, I think the thing highlighted in yellow is if we remember, the BOD is coming in at like eight hundred milligrams per liter into this. The limit on this one, on the Ohio side, is ten milligrams per liter on the outfall, so that's how much reduction they need to do in BOD to meet the, the permit requirements. This is standard for s- normal wastewater treatment plants, so municipal plants will have very similar limits, so it's, it's right in line. In fact, this is considered on the tighter end of limits, again, I'm not saying IED will do this, for two municipal plants upriver in Indiana, they have, it's thirty and, and twenty-five, so it's a little bit looser. So, it's gonna be in that range, it's a high-level production, and IED sets it to make the river. Unique here is oil and grease, you don't see that initially in municipal, because this generates a lot of that, so they set limits on oil and grease, to make sure you're not, like, greasing the river, it's kind of treated separately. And then standard, this is just other standard things you see in, dissolved oxygen, make sure, reduce in that, and then E coli is key, 'cause that really measures your bacterial load, that's really telling you, are you killing all the bacteria through this process when you discharge? So, the process, I won't really talk about this much, it's not this setup, but it, it's quite a few mechanical systems that do this, you've got a bar screen to move solids, you have systems to move the fat, oil, and grease, different ones, it's a biological process that breaks down the BOD. And then, depending on the permit level, you can have another filter to back in, a filter out, to reduce the system's solids. And then finally, at the end, you have to disinfect the water, and that's done with ultraviolet, sometimes it's done with chlorine, it can be done with peroxide. All of these are designed to kill all, all the bacteria coming out of it. So, really, one of the impacts, it's all gonna be managed by this permit, they're gonna design a plan to meet the permit, IED's gonna manage it, and it should, it should control, just like any other municipal system. So, I'm gonna summarize for both of us, I think, here, we have the summary, um, almost all the water from the groundwater wells is gonna return to the river. So, as far as very, very little consumptive use, they're gonna take water out, borrow it, clean it, put it back, basically, in the river. Worst-case scenario, you'll see one to ten feet of drawdown in the neighboring wells, if they create a problem, then they're gonna be required to mitigate it from the neighbors. And then the wastewater treatment plant would be ultimately designed to meet the requirements of the NPS permit, IED will manage that, and, uh, make sure that they're not upsetting, upsetting the river. So, I think that's what we have, and take any questions.
How come, in the lagoon, how come it's not lined?
It can be, eh?
Because it seems like when you're pumping water out of the wells, it's gonna suck from that lagoon, possibly get that down the.
It, it could, and that would be okay, because the water's not, the only thing is it's.
At that point, it's temperature only.
It's only temperature, so in that case, it's, it's just returning the water right there to the lagoon. So, you know, it would be different if this was, if this was contaminated water beyond temperature, then you would wanna line that or treat it for a little bit.
So, the, the temperature, is it cooling in or?
It is, it just, all of it is, it's, it's completely a time thing, so it just sits there and equalizes with the, with the ground and the atmosphere.
By the time it gets to the lagoon, it's already been treated, right? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, well, with the water that goes to the lagoon, it, it's, it's non-contact cooling, so it never touches anything that really.
Contaminates.
Changes it, contaminates it, so the only thing that you worry about is the temperature on that, and they don't wanna dump hot water into the river. So, you have to go to the lagoon to let the temperature equalize before it goes to the river.
I can ask, well, is it possible for, if you're pumping the wells, for that warm water to be drawled out of that lagoon into the aquifer?
It can go into the aquifer, but by the time it would move through the aquifer, it would be destabilizing the temperature, the temperature didn't create.
So, would create bacteria?
No, no, and the aquifers, especially the sand gravel aquifers, they're natural filters, I mean, that's a major advantage of why people use gravel and aquifers, 'cause you figure the rainwater's infiltrating in anyways, through the soils and picking up all that, but by the time it goes through all the, all the sand and gravel that's filtered out, you know, the sand and gravel, there's lots of time for, um, bacteria, viruses to die. It's a pretty slow process.
I got a couple, three or four questions.
Sure.
Since this was thirty-five thousand from seventeen-page report, was this put up for bid, or how did the redevelopment committee determine you guys were gonna do it?
I, I'll pass that to the committee.
I'd like to, this is a company that, uh, we've worked with a little bit before, you know, they've worked for us, and destroyed us, so we went back to the company that we worked with before, who gave us a discounted price in the first place, and that's how we followed us to it.
So, thirty-five thousand from seventeen-page is a discounted price?
That's correct.
What's a normal price?
Forty-five.
And you didn't put it up for any other companies, did you?
We did not.
And they just did a desktop study according to their report?
I had to let them tell you how they did their study.
Yeah, 'cause it, it states in the report, it was a desktop study. So, I wondered what the difference in that and a full environmental report would be.
I'd have to ask him to, I can't.
He's standing right there.
I mean, you're correct, yes, it was just, it was just a desktop study, we're looking at state databases and pulling in information and reading reports, and, uh, that's, that's what we did.
And that's all they required for thirty-five thousand? They'd like to meet some others down this way. I agree with Dan on the liner part, what's the temperature going into and out of the lagoon? When it hits the river, what's the expected temperature range of the water normally in a situation like this?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's coming in eighty degrees in the, in the lagoon, and then the river is variable based on the season, right, so, and it, and it needs a match.
I was gonna say, it's gotta be different in summer.
Yeah, yeah, but the cooling's different too, because you've got atmospheric.
Are there no cooling towers or anything involved with this process?
I don't know if there's part of the process.
No.
No.
Okay. And turkeys, when you slaughter them, are a hundred and six degrees body temperature. What do you guys normally cool them down to?
Below forty.
At this point, we would ask the gentleman to come to the podium, say his name, and then we proceed.
We need to, Ryan Koff, one with Whitewater Processing, um, the, yeah, so they're a hundred and three, a hundred and six, um, we're cooling them to forty degrees or less in approximately three or four hours.
So, you use like a geothermal cooling system?
Uh, yeah, that's what this is, so we're pumping low water out, it goes through a compressor, uh, system. uh, system that is providing the cooling to the chiller, to the water ground chiller that's showing the turkeys.
Okay. And I, I calculated roughly, you're gonna use two hundred and fifty-seven gallons to cool, to cool one turkey. Does you take one point eight million gallons divided by seven thousand turkeys being slaughtered?
Yeah, it's also running the whole freezer facility, blast freezers, cold storage for fresh product. It's the freezer systems, you know, providing also building cooling, um, there's a lot more to it.
Do you guys use a flash freeze?
Yes, we do.
And the other question I had, what, you know, we're gonna be discharging about eighty thousand, thousand gallons of water per hour, and this is probably for those guys. What effect will this have on the level of water, whitewater river?
It won't have any.
Not at all?
No, we're gonna discharge, was it one point six?
One point six.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One point what?
One point six.
That money, would that water otherwise be running from the aquifer into the white, into the river?
Right.
So it's just coming in.
It's part of the same water system, so it's just, you know, we're pulling it out, using it, cleaning it, putting it back.
So are you saying that the aquifer is the same as the river? It's one of the same body?
They are hydraulically connected, yes.
Hydraulically connected, but they aren't physically connected?
Correct.
What's the difference?
Yeah, I can touch you, Tony.
The, the water from the river mingles in with the water in the aquifer, is that what you're saying?
When a well changes the gradient towards the well from the river, that's what happens. The water comes through the river to the, to the well.
So you're talking about creating a vacuum from the river to the aquifer?
Correct. Same like gravel bit lakes over down the river, you'll see, you know, in the summer they go, they drop with the river level. And in the, in the winter they rise, so it's like here, the two seventy-five interchange upon their running together. It, it changes with river level, river floods, flood stage, that backs up to the ground.
What about, will there be any effect on efficient wildlife in the river because of this?
Uh, we went through a full eight step, uh, review with USDA, environmental review, and D N R was part of that review process. And they reported back that they did not see any.
Your little treatment area, that's about flood.
Yeah, so, so let me, I guess like, kinda do my whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wanna answer your question by. As material and stuff. Uh, it's very similar, yeah, yeah, we're on the same river, same conditions and the, in the bottom land there. Right, yeah. So, yeah, so good evening, thanks for, thanks for having me, I'm Ryan Kaufman with Whitewater Processing. Um, trying to get this, this project off the ground, so I am a fourth generation business owner, my great grandmother actually started this all in nineteen thirty-two. Um, so it's gone through, started in the Miami town area, and then now with our current facility in Harrison, we've built the fifties. Um, we've continued to add on and grow, and the facility's aging as well as we just, our business has grown beyond what it can contain. So we started looking for new locations, uh, we see the site, it's close to home. So we're gonna try to, try to build and grow here. So the new facility will be sized to double our production, right now we can do nine thousand turkeys a day. Uh, but we have kind of a batch process that, at the end of the day, everything's full, we gotta stop, we're done. Um, so this will be sized similar, except it will be a continuous process. So we could add shifts as we can pick up the land, um, or bring on, you know, more turkey growers, more turkeys. So, so that's what we're trying to do. We operate, you know, very similar situation. Uh, there and Harrison, that, we, we pump our own well waters, we have our own public drinking system, um, on the certified operator. And then we do our own water treatment, disinfection, and discharge to the whitewater river. So, um, very similar, um, we're just growing and modernizing.
Do you have somebody on staff that controls that wastewater?
Yeah, so we have a, we have a full-time operator, um, we go through, there's daily testing, weekly testing, and monthly testing. Um, the daily stuff we use ourselves, it's like temperature, P H, uh, dissolved oxygen, some, some items. Uh, weekly, a lab comes and pulls samples, um, just wanna have a lab complete with either the whitewater grease, uh, ammonia, stuff like that.
That's independent labs, not associated with the organization at all?
Right.
Your, uh, your wastewater, your little wastewater treatment, is anybody else, was that just for your plant, your plant only? Would anybody else hook on to that or?
No, it's just for us, so, um, so Brian mentioned the strength of our wastewater is very different than municipal. So IDEM, our Harrison site, we're right next door to the municipal system, but we don't discharge them because their equipment and technology's not designed to treat our type of water. So, so we'll have a specialized treatment system that's designed just to treat our water, um, and so.
You guys used to put waste in there, in there, didn't you?
Uh, no, didn't.
Like, did you, did you just build a new big thing down there about, wow?
Yeah.
Five years, five, one years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, we didn't, um, we considered that at the time, but, um, they had pre-treatment requirements that were gonna cost almost the same investment for us to be able to discharge water to them at a lower, um, a lower loading rate than what we comes around the plant, so we ended up building a full-scale system, yeah. So, yeah, and that was, uh, that was my, my project, um, so I went to engineering school, got an engineering degree, Rose Holman. And then, um, that was my project, working home, so.
It was interesting.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know I was gonna work in wastewater, but, um, yeah, so went through a, we sponsored research at the H I T university. So Dr. Karen Mansole, worked with her, um, did a lot of lab, mixed, you know, research on exactly how to set this system up to make it treat our water specifically. Uh, no, that's for the existing plant, so, yeah, and then the new plant's gonna use the same basic technology, but some newer, more modern facilities to, to do within. But we're still utilizing the same, the DAF unit to remove that on the grease and then biological processes breaks down the B O D and T S S, ammonia. Because they're all, I mean, they're all naturally degrading items, you know, sort of the waste from the turkey, the blood, the fat, it's naturally, it's natural things. You just don't wanna put it in, you know, high concentrations, it's not good, but. Those whole things naturally break down, so it's all biological processes.
So at your other plant, what do you use to disin, for disinfection? Do you use U V or?
U D.
Someone told me that's the best thing to use.
Yeah, so we use U V, that's, um, currently, there's a push for, uh, peroxide, so basically just inject peroxide. Um, it kills bacteria and then the gases bubbles off and you put peroxide, it kind of bubbles off. So there is kind of a, it's kind of a hot, hot button item, um, so we're gonna evaluate that, but, um, U V would likely be the choice.
So is your employee waste gonna go to the same plant as your turkey?
Yeah, so it all has to be plum separate, so the, the break area, restrooms, everything is all plum separate. It'll get to the septic tank for solids removal, and then the gray water off the septic tank would be combined, um, in the treatment system.
And treated.
And treated the same. And basically the state allows that because it's, we're looking at the same components, so we're looking at B O D, T S S, and ammonia. And U D disinfection, so we're looking at the same items, so, so we're able to treat them together, rather than have two separate treatment systems.
This is a silly question, but in that graphic, that seemed like the wells were a lot closer to the river. And I see they're up by the street, I'm not in your, I mean, in the thingy show, look like the well was closer to the river.
See, I think that, that was just kind of for illustration, um.
I didn't know, I didn't know that, that there was probably some sort of strategy where you put the wells.
Um, there's setback distances from buildings, um, setback distances from each other, um, you know, there, there's, it's done with purpose, yes. Um, but we also wanna keep them out of the flood area to keep them up.
So they're all in that front parcel?
Yes.
But that's it, the five hundred year flood?
Uh, there, we won't be on the one. Yeah, there's, there's, uh, portions of it, I don't know about flood, I know the hundred year mark, there's portions of the site are already above the hundred year mark. But once we complete the building pad, we go up from there, our, we're actually above the five hundred year mark.
Yeah, because I've seen.
Part of their property.
Well, I think, uh, most of us up here, the only concern we have was the, uh, the, the product, you know, getting back into the river. And it seems like you could test them weekly and monthly and all that.
Yeah, yeah, no, IDEM, I mean, we work with the I V P now, and we work with IDEM somewhere on farms where they grow, with new permits and stuff like that. Um, I think they both operate very similar, um, so I, I don't expect any issues with IDEM's, with their plan. And what they're gonna require of us, it's gonna be, be very similar.
I know there's not a lot of residents or any residents really around there, uh, but just out of curiosity, what about the smell?
Yeah, um, so that's part of, part of that site is that the wind direction, um, below our site, downwind is, is all, not just in the floodway, but in the floodway. So the, the chance of being developed there is very low, very low, so.
So you're saying it still stinks a little?
Well, yeah, that, it's livestock, I mean, bringing life, livestock, um, um, there's orders that exist, um. You know, there, there's kind of a, this stigma in their past history, you know, not even, and earlier where there were some other issues. That was due to old technology and, uh, also we're right next to the city wastewater plant too. And so there was some shared, uh, shared responsibility.
Some of us are used to it.
Yes, we had to know of the, the famous creek bridge, yeah. But, um, but no, the, the new facility, uh, part of it is there's things we keep outside now that won't be outside, we can keep inside. Uh, we've grown and kinda taken things outside and built outbuildings and separated them at our current facility that, that now we'll be able to properly build, you know, inside the building, um, so like, I have some questions, there's like the feathers and the heads and the feet. Um, you know, those are all sale items, they go to a rendering company that cooks them down and makes fertilizer or animal by products or, um.
So that's truck.
But it's, the truck is inside the building, through the process, there's an auger that's continuously loading the truck during the day, during the shift. Uh, once the shift's over, they park the trailer, hook up to it, and it goes down the river.
There was some confusion here at the last meeting about where all the parts went to, and you're.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think, I think there's a market for that.
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, we actually get paid, sometimes it, it, it just covers trucking to get rid of it, but that's still favorable situation, for sure. Um, we don't have to landfill or, or deal with it another way, and, and it creates a, a positive impact, it creates another product and use them differently.
Brian, I really appreciate all the time he's spent explaining and, and helping to put us at ease with some questions, but we are also the fiscal body, right? So from the fiscal standpoint, um, impact as far as jobs, job creation and, and the, the tax base that's created here, certainly from the fiscal perspective is a great win for Dearborn County. And, uh, these, these jobs are, how many of these, are these all new jobs, or do you see some of these being job transfers from the Harrison plant to Dearborn County?
I believe, um, I'd have to guess probably seventy-five percent transplant. Um, I know there's some people who may not, you know, transfer with us, and I do, and I know I'm gonna need to hire more, uh, some of the actual higher level jobs, mechanics, drivers, uh, because the new facility will have to be more technology than right now. Um, I've got a guy that can fix the, uh, so, so there won't be some addition, um, just right out, out of gate of those jobs. And then as, um, we get the facility up and running and we can ramp up production, I, I know I have customers and I have suppliers um, out there willing, um, so in the five years of this operation, we can ramp up, we'll be running extra shifts, extra hours, and that will be additional jobs, new jobs.
Other than excluding the executive positions there, it says average salary twenty-seven dollars an hour, what, what is the range?
So drivers are starting twenty-five, mechanics are like thirty and up, um, there are a number of kind of middle, like area managers, floor managers, the range sixteen to one five. So it's in that range.
What about like the people doing, killing?
Starting in, we're starting in at ten, or, well, it's above ten ways, so it's, it's like eleven now. But then they get a two dollar raise in sixty days, and then we have kind of an odd structure where we do weekly bonuses. Uh, so instead of having an attendance program where people miss days and they get fired or they get in trouble, we, we use the carrot method. So it's a hundred eighty bucks a week, you just hit your days that you're scheduled and you show up on time. So that, um, like, so one department that works thirty-two to thirty-five dollars a week, that's like six bucks an hour. You know, so they're coming in with a base rate of ten, and then that bonus each week makes it like sixteen.
Sounds like a pretty good idea.
It actually, it actually works pretty well. It, it actually works pretty well. Um, it's, it teaches, you know, some younger people, um, responsibility and what's important, getting people to show up on time and be, be, uh, reliable. So that's a lot of our, a lot of our incoming jobs are, um, you know, guys still in high school or ride out of high school, um, so.
Things volumes that you've been investing in for generations.
Yeah.
Which says a lot about you.
Yeah, I've been, I've been very fortunate about the previous generations of our workers, um.
The fact that you went to Rose Hall and, I mean, that's, that's, that's part of the time you.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if that was favorable when it happened, but I think it's appreciated now.
So I think I've heard you mention IDEM, D N R, USDA is, is part of this program as well, is part of the operation. So multiple agencies also helping keep an eye on the facility and, and your procedures policy.
Yeah, yes, we have three USDA inspectors on site every day, so we have a line inspector that's looking at every turkey. Uh, as soon as you open it up, they're, they're inspecting to make sure you see, you know, you see issues in the liver or inside the body cavity, you know, condemned bird throwaway or maybe trim something off. Um, and then there's an inspector that walks around and looks at just G M Ps, good manufacturing processes, so hairnets, um, smocks, hand washing. Uh, you know, drop a knife, can't pick it up, you've got sanitizes and stuff like that, and then there's a vet who's on site who's looking at the birds coming in. So, and his job's been especially busy lately with the A I bird flu stuff, um, so he's had a very, much more active role.
Those are all USDA employees.
So my main concern basically is with the groundwater contamination. Because we've got a mess down here on the western side of the county with the fly spits from I N M from years ago. That affects Aurora, Gil, and all that, that's history. So I feel like this is, we're a contaminator, this is bad on here, so I'm just gonna stay. You guys decide your future.
I think the technology is coming with the.
Well, I think cops will run it, I've done cops for quite a few years since I started teaching, seven in nineteen seventy. You know, so.
I remember those guys.
Yeah, I remember, you know, they're all good guys, you know, and I know the cops will do what's right and do the job right. I don't have an issue with you guys, I just don't wanna get into another environmental mess like we have over in this part of the county.
So why not go against it then, if that's how you feel? You just wanna be able to point the finger to everybody else on this board?
No, I'm just gonna stay because I don't feel. No, I'm just going to abstain because I don't feel like it's my decision, it's yours.
And, and I would say, I'm not going to abandon all my sites anywhere near to ask you to fly.
What are you guys going to do with the sludge?
The sludge goes to landfill.
Okay, so you don't spread it on crop fields or anything?
No, it has, uh, it's, everything's general, uh, grass approved, but we still don't use it, we shouldn't get it out of, but there ain't nothing.
But that's very expensive to get rid of too.
Thirty dollars a ton.
Yeah, a real ton.
But fortunately, our, our process is pretty efficient, doesn't take a lot of sludge, and then we can water it and dry it, and it, it remains costly to do it that way.
Any other questions for Mr. Cox? Appreciate your information, and hopefully you'll stick around basically if anything else comes up.
Okay.
The next, uh, movement on this process would be to adopt twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three, the confirmatory resolution of the Dearborn County, now's the confirming designation of certain areas within both the more dry economic colonization area. So we discussed this at our January meeting, and approve that part of the process. This is, I guess, the second part of the same process. So Mr. Smart, I guess you've got the, the document?
I do.
So we simply need a motion to adopt this resolution, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve this, uh, confirmatory resolution, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion? All those in favor, six, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Close name?
Move.
Larry, you abstaining?
I'm abstaining. Yep.
Motion passes. All right, would you like for us to take this one at a time and sign it, or you want us to go to the next one?
You can go to the next one.
Okay, the next one is twenty twenty-five dash zero zero four. It's a resolution approving the statement of benefit to real property tax abatements, and that information's been provided to us. It's a ten-year story, and a hundred percent going down to zero percent. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, six, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Close name?
Are you abstaining on that, Mr. Cox?
Yep.
I have a question for Mr. Smart.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can councilman Wright legally abstain from voting on these issues?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. So next on our agenda is the auditor, so we will wait for that until we sign the resolution, so we have first on that. Yeah, would ask Mr. Cox, or say Mr. Cox, and the rest of the individuals from the redevelopment commission and consultants to, thank you for your information and for participation in our meeting tonight. Welcome to Dearborn County, Mr. Cox. We're doing this in Long Island.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is simply paperwork, if you need.
If you can hear it last, let's get a note out that you we did. How long was it?
Oh, two years ago, Brian.
Oh, yeah, I can't use the, come on, that's.
Yeah.
You're trying to, oh, yeah.
I'm doing that on purpose.
I do it, I didn't realize I did, but you pointed it out.
Okay.
So Liz, our next one is just that report that you might have to say that you agree. And it's just what happened this year.
So from next, I want our agenda. And like us with the senior meeting, the next I want our agenda is that the auditor has provided us with the tip report, and it's just a matter of us having information, with no action applied. Oh, it's, that's a question, but, uh, it's in, anyway, but information has been provided for you at the part box, and if you have the information that you don't want to give out tonight, is that all you, you don't have?
Yeah.
This is for all our tips.
That's all, all the tips.
That's what happened last year, it's, it's all your members, all your, uh, dispersments, receipts, everything. And you have, I have to, uh, put that into data, or data till it is anything, and then I submit it. Each year, April fifteenth.
Either Norman also?
I don't do those, I just do the camera ones.
Well, I'll have one out. I say it, Roy.
Yes, yes.
West Harrison, yes.
Yeah.
He's talking about the west.
The west, yeah.
Yeah.
So the next on our agenda is the salary ordinance. And that's something we'll need, there's going to be several papers assigned tonight, so.
Yes.
Please, nobody leave.
And that, this is just, uh, housekeeping, and.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the salary order?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Danny does.
All those in favor, six, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Close name? Motion passes. Now, it's going to require signatures. If you want us to wait, are you going to do that?
We'll operate a little up if you want.
The next is an amendment to the annual local with Ohio County for five thousand dollars. Do we just need a motion to approve it, huh?
Yes.
It's an additional five thousand toward courts?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the additional five thousand dollars received from Ohio County to Dearborn County for certain courts?
So move. Second.
All those in favor, six, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Close name? Motion passes. We have resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two, it's a resolution transferring riverboat revenue, public revenue funds. And it shows how council at our August meeting, um, approved the dispersment of the riverboat funds in which category that money goes into. And this is another item that requires signatures.
Did we vote on that?
We did it in the budget.
Well, the, the reason we're doing this one is because stakeholder accounts wanted us to leave it in one fund, and we're doing this so we can move it to different funds and use it, it's easier for our bookkeeping, for Leah's bookkeeping.
So did we put on dispersment?
Not, not.
Yeah, we, we did on this during budget.
But this is the first time we've had to sign this on it.
Right.
Well, it's just the way we move the money.
It's for stakeholder accounts purposes, not anything else. So is there a, a motion to approve this resolution? Thank you, Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. All those in favor, six, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Close name? Motion passes. Um, minutes were emailed to everyone, is there a motion to approve the minutes from our January meeting? Yes, is there, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, six, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Who was the first one?
Danny.
Yes. Motion passes. Do you have any other business comments?
No, I'm done.
Yes, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor, six, probably saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, who are, um, please say, go follow.
Yeah.